So I'm gonna call the November 19, 2019 meeting of the Easton Metal Planning Board to order. So pursuant to Mass General Law, I am asking if there are anybody in the audience who is recording this meeting, and if so, please state your name. Hearing none, we are being recorded by LCAT on both visual and audio. So Mr. Richards is due at any minute, so I'm going to just do a quick call of the roll. So in attendance is Jonathan Torsia, George Kingston, and myself, Russell Denver.
And Mr. Richards is here.
Oh, and here is Mr. Richards, thank you.
Sorry I'm late.
Give you a minute to settle?
I'm pretty well settled.
And do you want to call the first order? We'll skip the minutes for now.
Okay.
You want to call the first order of business?
Site plan waiver review request, 2019-37, Home Office. Request by applicant for a site plan review waiver for Home Office for a carpenter used at 36 Athens Street, Assessors Parcel ID 2-27-A, located on .23 plus or minus acre site in Residential C zoning district. The applicant is, oh boy. Thank you very much. Do you want to come forward, please? 36 Athens Street, Easton Metal. Sorry, I can't pronounce your name very well. Okay, while you're here. That's good.
So just tell us a little bit about what you have in mind to do.
So, I have my hands first, and I like to do some from the wood, some...
You need to speak louder, okay, so they can hear you.
Yeah, I can do something from the wood, like red oak, white oak, some pine, yeah, like carpenter stuff.
Carpentry work, okay.
Moldings, yeah.
Okay.
I have some tools, like planners, routers.
And you're doing it more as a hobby?
It's like my hobby now, yeah. I do it like about 15 years.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then how will you actually go about selling the product?
I think I'm just gonna do some installation. I don't wanna, I don't wanna sell some product, just installation about moldings, kitchens.
Anyone have any questions?
No commercial vehicles at the house?
I have two vehicles, my wife and my truck, yeah.
Is your truck a commercial vehicle?
I have small truck.
Okay, so the truck will need to be garaged?
Yeah, I have, yeah, I have a big shed, and I have garage to cars.
Fine, okay, great, okay. Anyone else?
Straightforward, Home Office.
Yep. Hearing no other questions?
Want to make a motion to approve?
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So a motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Passes. You're all set.
Thank you so much.
Ready to go.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good luck.
So I don't have to sign in, sign out now?
No. We will call you tomorrow, and ask you to come in and pick up the site plan waiver form that's being signed up, okay?
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
So before our next item, so let's look at the minutes of our October 15, 2019 meeting. If people had an opportunity to review them, and if so, is there a motion to accept?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So a motion been made and seconded to accept the minutes of the October 15, 2019 meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay, so that item passes. Item two?
SPRW 2019-38, Rooftop Solar. Request by applicant for site plan review waiver for rooftop solar photovoltaic system at 35 Industrial Drive, Assessors Parcel ID 19-1-6, located on a 7.55 plus or minus site in the Industrial Garden Park zoning district. The applicant is Pat Hastings, Dynamic Energy Solutions LLC, 1550 Liberty Ridge Drive, Suite 310, Wayne, Pennsylvania.
Someone here for the petitioner? Please come forward.
Pat couldn't make it, he sent me on his behalf.
Okay. So, tell us about the project.
Just a standard industrial zone, rooftop solar, doesn't sit very high off the roof, very limited equipment on the ground.
How many panels do you anticipate having?
On this one here, let me see, I don't know, offhand, I would have to guess somewhere around a thousand.
A thousand individual panels?
I actually physically did the site visit there originally and looked at the rooftop.
And the total square footage of the rooftop is?
That I don't know either.
Okay. Any other questions from the members of the board?
I have a question. Are there any panels on the ground, or just transfer equipment on the ground?
Just the transfer equipment.
So all the, 100% of the panels are on the roof?
Correct.
Okay.
There's no other questions, do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay, or none, so you're all set. Thank you. So just before we take the next item, you can go. I just wanted to let the public know so that we received a letter of resignation from our former member Lou Morabito. So Lou resigned the board on October 31 of this year, and I just want to publicly thank Lou for his time and efforts on behalf of the town. So he and I started the exact same meeting about two and a half years ago, and so I certainly applaud people who volunteer their time on behalf of the town, so I just want to publicly acknowledge Lou. Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Okay, number three, SPRW 2019-39 Salon. Request by applicant for a site plan review waiver for a salon at 54 AKA 56, Prospect Street, Assessors Parcel ID 27-165C, located in a .22 plus or minus acre site in the Business Zoning District. The applicant is Laura Trandera, 55 Maple Shade Avenue, Easton Metal, Mass.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks.
So same question I've asked everybody, tell us what you plan on doing there.
Basically, it's gonna be a nail salon. I've been doing nails 21 years, but rented at different places, and I've been renting this space for different use. I've been painting furniture, just not advertising it, but there's enough room to do both businesses, so I wanted to, there's two, there's a 54 and 56, so 54 if I could put my nail business there, be helpful, so I can kind of go back and forth next door.
Which building is this?
The one on Prospect Street on the left, the first building on the left.
The white one next to the church?
Yes.
Okay.
I know it's been empty for quite some time, and there's some news it might get knocked down, or, but for now, I'm there, so if I can do it, it'd be nice.
Make a motion to approve.
I just was wondering, I don't know if this is on everyone else's, but the tax collector affidavit wasn't filled out on the bottom half here, I just was wondering.
She recently had an application and second waiver, so if it's within six months, she's all set.
Do I have a second?
I'll have a second.
So a motion made and seconded, all in favor of the waiver, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no one. You're all set?
Thank you very much.
Okay, number four, Site Plan Review Waiver, 2019-40, Skincare Spa. Request by applicant for a site plan review waiver for a skincare spa at 280 North Main Street, Suite 7, Assessors Parcel ID 14-12-F, located on a 1.25 acre site in the Commercial Zoning District. The applicants are Michelle Conick, 51 White Avenue, did I get it right?
Michaela.
Okay, Michaela, see, I'm sorry about that, to Chickapie, Mass, and Sonia Murray, 39 Court Street, Floor 2, Westfield, Mass.
Hello.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
So tell us.
So I'm Michaela, I'm a licensed petitioner in the state of Massachusetts, and this is my partner Sonia Murray, she's also a licensed petitioner in the state of Massachusetts. We're looking to obtain our business certificate to open a skincare spa where we'll offer facials, waxing, and different skincare services. There's no commercial vehicles or any changes being made to the building, we're just leasing a space in a remainder building, and we're not doing micropigmentation, or microbleating, or permanent makeup, or anything like that.
You answered my question.
Yes.
She saw the comments.
Yes, yes.
Good. Anyone have any questions?
Makes sense.
Okay, welcome to town.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. So a motion been made, seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? You're all set?
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, SPRW 2019-41, Office. Request by applicant for site plan review waiver for office space for Community Education Nonprofit at 6 North Main Street, Assessors Parcel ID 27-34-0, located on a .23 plus or minus acre site in Business Zoning District. The applicant is Mark Danalas, 96 Edmund Street, Unit 2, Easton Metal, Mass.
Hello.
How are you gentlemen?
Good.
How are you ladies?
So tell us about your venture.
Yeah, we're looking, I'm looking to have a back office where it would be a resource center, where we would have solutions that if people need help with anything, that we could just, they could come into a place where they could get the resources that they need, to help give them the direction into whatever that may be. And it would also be a collaboratory with other centers that will be coming eventually, which would freely be collaborating information with each other, you know, to help find truth and get answers that people are looking for.
So, I don't think I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Could you put down back office for community education?
Education center, right.
Yeah.
Okay, so basically, it would be a education center where people could come in, it's also like slash library, you know, where people could come in and get resources that they would need, and if they needed something special, like if somebody had a problem with like an opioid addiction, or whatever, you know, that we could bring in people who are professionals that could help educate the people and get the answers that they need. So, you know, it's...
Okay, so the community education is based around...
Right, like kind of facilitating...
Mental health issues, addiction issues?
Yeah, so it would basically, like, you know, we don't want to put it in a box because it's gonna be, there's gonna be so many facets to it, you know? So if there's homelessness, if the people are pregnant and they don't have a place to live, I mean, we're gonna try to have all types of resources that people will be able to come here. So it's not just one thing in a box.
So you'll be connecting them with resources?
Right, exactly, yes.
Be doing treatment or anything like that?
Exactly, no, 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 no.
Okay. So are you part of an organization, or is this independent?
It's just independent, you know, at the moment.
Does it have a name at the moment?
Community Education Centers of North America.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And this is, which building now is the CPA office right now?
It's the one that's right on the property, it's the white building, number six.
Okay.
That's Dobek's office, so I have the upstairs on the second floor and a back office there.
I got you, I got you, okay.
Any other questions? Members of the board? Not, do I hear a motion?
I have, make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So a motion's been made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, you're all set. Thank you.
Appreciate it, have a good night.
Okay.
That's it, so I'll go back tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, SPRW 2019-42, Body Boutique. Request by applicant for site plan review waiver for a retail business at 34 Center Square, Assessors Parcel ID 27-156-D, located on a .44 plus or minus acre site in Business Zoning District. The applicant is Justin Pellegrino, 42 Pleasant Crossing, West Springfield, Mass.
Aye. Justice.
Justice, excuse me.
It's all right.
Boy, I haven't heard a horrible name today with these names.
No, it's okay. How is everybody?
Sorry, I'm good. How are you?
So I want to open a women's boutique selling clothing, shoes, and accessories at 34 Center Square, and hopefully adding more accessories, and hopefully adding online. There's no commercial vehicles. So, questions?
Yeah, which location at Center Square?
It's right on the side of Chipotle, across from the entrance of Center Square, between the Realtor Group and the TV American Trade, Ameritrade, right in the center. It used to be the Cupcake Shop, I believe, I think we said there was another boutique in there a long time ago, so...
Kate Gray was?
My, that was where Kate Gray was, yeah.
I believe so.
I was hoping it was gonna be the one where White was, but...
Yeah, yeah.
And just...
Maybe you can go into that one, yeah.
Yeah, maybe. And just to add, I have a history on management, and retail, and buying, so that helps.
So it's allowed use in a retail location, make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So a motion's been made and seconded to approve the waiver, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, you're all set.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Okay, A&R, 2019-08, 443 Shaker Road. Request for endorsement of a plan believed not to be required subdivision approval under subdivision control law to combine Assessors Parcel ID 19-12-A, 20-1-0, and 20-2-0 into one tax lot for a combined parcel totaling 57,410 square feet, plus or minus, located in Industrial Garden Park, whoa, 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 57.4 acres, plus or minus, located in Industrial Garden Park District. Applicant is Joseph Hamel, care of DG Massachusetts Solar LLC, 700 Universe Boulevard, A1A/JB, Juneau Beach, Florida, 33408.
So I'd like to the board to consider at least also hearing the same petitioners for item 13, which really relates to the reason they're doing the A&R, to actually do the solar on that at the same time. So if we need a motion to take both at the same time, I would be happy to hear that.
Okay, that will be a public hearing.
Okay, all right, so we'll do this first, and then we'll maybe take that one out of order.
We can take it out of order, yeah.
I'm not Joseph Hamel, I'm just replacing Joseph Hamel for this meeting.
Okay.
But I represent DG Massachusetts Solar LLC, just the applicant.
Okay. Do you just want to introduce yourself?
Sure. My name is Mithun Vyas, and I represent DG Massachusetts Solar LLC, and the application is to put 5 megawatt AC sort of photovoltaic system on the property with 3 megawatts on the roof, and 2 megawatts on the roof.
So before we do that, we're going to address the approval not required?
Okay.
So are you able to address the approval not required?
Yes, so we're requesting approval not required, so that we can combine the...
You can sit down.
Existing parcels into one parcel, so that, you know, there's road frontage on the property on the three parcels, on the north, the east, and the south, so we're not changing any of that.
Yep.
Just want to combine all the parcels together, so that we don't get the photovoltaic system that gets subjected to setbacks between the parcels. That's the reason.
Hold on, let them just review this a little bit further.
See which parcels, okay, they've got that one.
This chair, I know.
Yes ma'am.
This was one of the best A&R plans I have seen presented to this board, that's detailed, it's easy to read, and I want to thank you.
Thank you. You don't see any specific issues with that?
Okay. So, pretty straightforward.
So, we'll take a motion to...
A motion to endorse.
Motion to endorse, I'll accept the motion to endorse. I just heard it from George, do I have a second?
I will second that.
All right, so we have a motion to endorse, it's been seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
No one opposed? Hearing none, so that passes.
I'll be back.
So, hold on, stay there.
I'm making a motion to take item 13 out of order, so that the applicant can just continue?
And so, would you...
Okay, so, item number 13, Case Site, 2019-12, Rooftop and Ground Mounted Solar System. Request by applicant for site plan review for the installation of a 5-megawatt rooftop and ground mounted solar system at 443 Shaker Road, Assessors Parcel ID 19-12-A, 20-1-0, 20-2-0, on a site totaling 57.4 acres, plus or minus, in the Industrial Garden Park zoning district. The applicant is Joseph Hamel, care of DG Massachusetts Solar LLC, 700 Universe Boulevard, A1A/JB, Juneau Beach, Florida.
So, Kelton?
I'm Kelton Kelly, I'm with EVS Engineering, I'm the civil engineer on this project.
So, when you start your presentation, why don't you just put the location in perspective so the public who's watching knows what property we're talking about, and you might just want to do a, you know, Shaker Road, industrial, so that they get an idea of what the property is? Hold up, we've got a little size problem here.
Is it basically the Cartamundi property?
Yes, so it's the Cartamundi property. I'll kind of let you explain the overall project, and then if there's project specifics related to design elements, I can fill in.
Yes, as we said, there are three parcels, and they are, I guess, between Industrial Drive on the north, Shaker Road on the east, and then I think Denslow Road on the south, and then there's a bike trail on the west of the property. We're proposing sort of photovoltaic on the building that exists on the property right now, sort of photovoltaic on the north, which is an empty lot, and then some more on the parking lot that is not being used, a portion of the parking lot that's not being used. These three, I guess, photovoltaic, sort of photovoltaic systems would be combined into a 5-megawatt system total, it would be 3 megawatts on the roof, and 2 megawatts on the ground, between the ground mounted system, which would be pile driven system on the north, and then a ballasted system, which would sit on the portion of the parking lot on the east of the property. And overall, you know, all that energy is going to National Grid system, and the project will qualify under SMART 2.0, which is the second version of the SMART program that Department of Energy Resources in Massachusetts has promulgated. We'll be applying under that program as soon as the regulation is approved, expect that in December. And then the request right now is for site plan approval for that 5-megawatt system. This will also have energy storage component to that project, it's not just sort of photovoltaic. The energy storage component is supposed to increase the overall efficiency of the system by storing some of the energy that we cannot capture, and also shifting some of the energy to evening time when the grid demands the most.
Okay.
Can you show us where the ground mounted stuff is actually gonna go?
How many ground mounted panels would there be?
So we're talking about 8,500 panels on the ground total, between this portion of the property, which is, you know, right now, not disturbed?
Mm-hmm.
And then we're clearing some trees in that area as well, and then there is an existing parking lot that's paved, that's not being, that's being underutilized, that we're putting some panels as well.
Okay.
So between these two, we're talking about 8,500 panels?
Yep.
We're talking about 9,500 panels on top of the roof.
Okay.
So this is the ground mounted part one, and then...
So, just before you go there, so are you taking down any trees along the bike path?
No.
Over here, no.
Okay.
These will all remain, the only clearing will be within this project area and essentially the setback area.
There's no, I don't think there's any trees any there, over there anyways.
This line right here...
The shrubs, yeah.
Some vegetation.
Yeah, some vegetation.
We're not taking that.
Okay. Effectively, if I remember correctly, the other portion there that is not project is a detention basin, stormwater management system.
So this part, we will put panels in?
You will.
Yep. They will be elevated to ensure that they're above the 100-year high water level with the freeboard required. Currently, this basin, we just need the design information for it, but the imperviousness of the panels is considered to just take on what's underneath it because of the way water flows off of it.
Right.
So there's only a small amount of impervious surface being added with the pads up in this corner for the equipment. Otherwise, everything else will remain vegetated underneath.
So have you done a stormwater analysis for this?
Yep.
And is that part of the submission?
I believe so, I think there was a preliminary stormwater report, or a stormwater report associated with it.
Good. Just wanted to make sure we didn't forget that.
Yep. And then just looking at the other...
That's part one of the ground mounted.
And then this will be...
This is the moved up, probably moved up.
And then this area up here, within that dotted black line there, will be the area in the parking lot. So we are clearing a few trees over there as well.
But we're replacing those trees with landscaping trees, so that, you know, we want to reduce shading, but we also want to provide some landscaping along Shaker Road.
Okay. So, when you put that in, how high will they be to start?
The trees?
Six feet.
Six feet. At time of planting, that would be a double row staggered of black forest, or black else groups.
Yep. So as you're driving along Shaker, you really won't...
Right, because we'll stagger them, so that essentially they provide that blockage.
And because these are ballasted system, they sit...
Sit low to the ground?
Yeah.
Okay. So are you putting any barriers along where Arnos is? Arnos is the meat store.
So, right up here.
Yeah.
Along here, no.
Yeah.
We, we're open, I mean, we have fence and...
There's a fence there, yeah, okay. I don't know if there was gonna be additional shading in there as well. So for the people who are at Great Woods, which is across the street, you have the north, so what will they be looking down?
Still at that same grove of trees, because we're only clearing up to a certain extent, so there will be some tree lines.
Okay. And how much electricity should this generate in the course of a normal year, what you're anticipating the output?
Talking about 13 kilowatt hours per megawatt AC, that's probably 7.2, so about 9.2 million kilowatt hours.
And that would more than sufficiently cover operations for Cartamundi for...
Yeah, so this energy is not going to the building, it's getting pushed back to the grid.
Okay.
So Cartamundi is leasing the property to us, and we are selling the energy to National Grid under the SMART program.
Okay.
But, yeah, man, technically speaking, the energy will flow back to the building.
Okay. And how long is the lease?
I think it's a 20-year lease for the SMART program.
And do you already have an agreement in place with National Grid?
We are working through an international process with National Grid, I mean, as everyone's aware, in central Massachusetts, there is a big transmission study going on with National Grid, so we're kind of stuck in that process, but we submitted the application to National Grid for study of the system.
Okay. Have we received comments from DPW regarding the stormwater report on this one? Their comments, as I have them here, only go through item 12.
So if you look at...
Oh, yeah, just say, right. Review pending is what it says.
So, no.
Okay. So my only concern would be for DPW to review the stormwater report, because we don't have that competency on this board to do that, we rely on them, and I would be reluctant to act on this until we hear from them. I know you guys are great engineers, but we still need to do our due diligence.
We're used to that.
Okay, yeah.
So, if...
It's not gonna put a dent in your real schedule.
Right. Is there a way to get contact information for your reviewers, so that if they do come across something that is a quick and easy fix, that we could handle it before they come...
They sit right outside our office every day, so, yeah.
I will leave a business card with you then, if that works.
Yeah.
So, we need to, this is a public hearing, so we need to open it up to the public, so I'd like to open them, open up the public hearing, and if there's anyone here who would like to address this issue, feel free to stand and give us your opinion.
Just one question, Andy Croll, I actually work at Cartamundi, I see coming up on the I see coming up on the agenda moratorium on ground-mounted. Would this delay be impacted by that?
No, you've already submitted your application.
Okay.
Thank you. Good question. Very relevant. Yep. Yes, sir?
Ralph Page, 306 Prospect Street. I'll come all the way up. No problem, Don. Was this to cover up any portion of the parking lot? I thought I heard something.
That's currently, they believe is currently being unused, or Cartamundi believes it's being unused.
I mean, is it elevated? Like, I know Smith and Wesson elevated them so the cars can still park under it.
No, it's not a carport.
So have we done an analysis as far as the size of the building and the required amount of parking and whether or not we're going to be losing some of the required amount of parking? I mean, whether it's used or not, there's still a required amount in our bylaw.
Good question. Thank you.
Good point. And that was going to be my question. Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you'll need to address that as well. If you haven't already.
Yeah, I can't remember. So Joe had submitted a bunch of additional documentation other than our engineering work. I'm just not sure if that was incorporated in that.
Unfortunately, there's no table of contents here, so it's hard to go through quickly and decide what's actually here.
If it's helpful when we hear back from the store, when we're going through the stormwater approval as well, we'll just make sure that we highlight that where it's located in the report, and if it's not provided, we'll provide that.
So our next scheduled hearing evening is December seventeenth.
Okay.
So we certainly would like you to touch base with, through Connie.
Yep.
You know, as soon as possible so that we can have the information from DPW's recommendation and you can talk to them.
Yeah.
Long before that meeting.
Yep.
So that we're aware of everything and we can act on it at that meeting.
Okay.
So if there's no other public comment, I'll take it back to the board for a motion, I believe, to continue... Continue, yeah, I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing to December seventeenth, you said? Seventeenth? At six o'clock?
I'll second that.
And just before we act on it, did you have any specific questions?
No, I think Ralph covered my question.
Okay. Agreed. Then we have a motion to continue. It's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No one opposed, hearing none. There you go. Thank you. And it's a compliment from Connie about your submittal, so thank you very much.
I'll grab my business card.
Just for the record, I noticed going through this that we will have to do some waivers, but they're requesting some waivers.
Yep.
So we will have to vote on those separately.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I can't get to sleep, I can read this.
Okay, number eight. Case site 2019-05, proposed commercial development for Shaker Road. Request by applicant for the construction proposed twenty-five hundred square foot plus or minus square foot bank and a fifty-five hundred square foot plus or minus commercial building at 244 Shaker Road, address parcel ID 18-35-0, on a 133,217 square foot plus or minus site located in residential A in business zoning district. Applicant is SIVAD Development Partners LP One Monarch Place Suite 1300 Springfield Mass. 01144, continued from April 16th, 19, June 18th, 19, July 16th, 19, August 20th, 19, September 17th, 19, October 15th, 19.
So just so we, as you're getting prepared there, so as Mr. Richards so eloquently read off, so this has, this item has been in front of this board for about a year now. This board has been extremely diligent, as well as the town departments have been extremely diligent in reviewing of this project. The initial use of this property actually goes back to 2018, where the initial proposal brought before this board was essentially to put in a Dunkin' Donuts, and that was withdrawn. And then they have come back with this proposal. What is being proposed by the petitioner is allowable in the zones in which the property is located. So this board's role in this is to review the site plan, make sure that the development as proposed meets all the requirements of the zoning bylaw. And we have spoken at length about placement of the building. The fire department has looked at the turning radiuses of the, for their equipment to get into the properties. We have, and I know the Conservation Commission has been involved throughout the course of this year. Thank you, Craig. We've had the police department and the DPW review the ingress and egress to this property to make sure that, in their opinion, it met all the required safety features that they felt comfortable with, and the petitioners have responded to that and have made changes to their plans. There, we, this board pushed hard for a sidewalk along Shaker Road. I don't believe that that is in the final plans. We are, well, I will be making a motion to look at the design review of the building itself, because I believe that it's an extremely important intersection in town and that we want to make sure that the building, which I'm sure it will be, will be beautiful for this town. So there's, there's limit on what this board can do. The board, essentially, we could vote to not approve the site plan, but I believe that we have really kind of gone through this project with a fine-tooth comb.
And it's this, what is your required vote on this? Is this a majority or is this four votes that are necessary? Because I know we're missing a member, but...
Yeah. Now, this is a special review. Does that require a majority? So it's a three, it's a three-person. So, so the last thing, when we last met, was the issue of the turning radiuses for access for the fire department. So I know that there has been communication back and forth with the fire chief. So Connie, do you just want to indicate, I know that they have approved the final plan as submitted, do you want to add anything to that?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Nothing at all.
So the fire chief has weighed in and the fire department has approved the design. So I will kind of open it up to the petitioners if there's anything else you wish to add. Well, in fairness to putting everything on the table, there was also last time, we were waiting for Tom Christensen to get back from the DPW because he had not had a chance to look at the design of the new stormwater management system. I believe he has weighed in and has approved it and notified Connie about that. Well taken. Okay. So we did address that and...
That was it, wasn't it?
Those were the two outstanding things, at least on my checklist from last night. So before we vote on this issue, does any member of the board have any questions?
No, I think, I've heard everything I can hear on this.
Okay. So hearing that, then if there's no other questions, do I have a motion?
Do you want to, well, it's a public hearing.
You're right. Thank you. So being a public hearing, does anyone wish to stand up and express opinion on this matter before we actually close the public hearing?
I'll just say something.
Hi. Okay.
Hi, I'm Catherine Roman. I'm at 185 Canterbury Circle. I'm a butter to this property. And I just wanted to follow up. I know at the last meeting, Mr. Kingston, you had recommended that the group go by Maple Shade Ave and take a look at the sidewalks there, and I'm just wondering if you had did that and considered that in your site. It sounds like that you didn't put it in the final proposal, and it's just disappointing to hear that that wasn't considered as far as the safety is concerned for the residents around Canterbury Circle. So, you know, I just, I guess I want that to be heard.
Yep, thank you.
It's a disappointment.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else?
Just curious, Elizabeth Boucher, Pisa Road. What are they going to put in there? Do they know yet? Is this offices or...
So I believe one, one thing has been decided. It's going to be a bank building. The corner, there were proposed bank buildings. Yep. The other has been described as a 5,000-square-foot multi-use retail slash office building.
Do we know of like a specific bank or just bank?
Just bank in general right now.
I didn't know if something had changed.
I don't think anybody wants me to say anything beyond that at this point. Anyone else wish to speak on this issue?
Brian Murphy, I'm one of the butters as well. I was just wondering, do they know like what type of hours would be allowed in the businesses that are yet to be?
Well, there are bylaws about the hours. We will, you know, abide by the bylaws, but typically banks are daytime operations and maybe half a day on Saturday, generally not open on Sunday. The other retail slash office establishments are able to establish their own hours as long as they're consistent with their posting and signage with the town and consistent with the bylaws. So we don't know, for instance, if the tenant X is going to be open nine to five or eight to four or whatever. You're not going to see someone open until midnight or something like that?
Like a parking lot lit up all night long and...
No, so, so, go ahead, Mr.... Well, the light will, any light will be all shown down on the property, so there will be no reflection up in the modern design. And that is something that we closely monitor as well.
I'd also like to reiterate that, how disappointed I am about the sidewalks not being taken into consideration. I think it's only a matter of time. If something does go through with this, something bad's going to happen there. I really wish they would reconsider that. And the only other question I would have, if this does get approval, it looks like this is right on the line, correct? As far back as it can go, this building?
So I'll let you explain the buffer.
So there's a, the zone line, it's actually, we're up against the zone line, which is what dictated where that building is on the site.
So explain the zone line with maybe how far up the property the next building would be, or the home, because they've now put in a home...
Yeah, there's a new one.
Close to that property.
Correct. So there's, the zone line, let's see, see a little better on the layout sheet here. Okay, so, so the, these, this parcel is split zone between the business on the front side and the residence A on the back side. So the way that the zoning rules and bylaws dictate what can be built on the property, we had to maintain the building in the business zone for the uses that are proposed on this parcel. So as far as the distance back from the porch, I can grab the scale.
There is a buffer though, between the building...
Yes.
And all the property lands.
Yes, sir. All that land.
Yes, so there will be a buffer.
Because the setback is measured from those, this block line, not the zone line.
Correct. So there will be a vegetated buffer between this parcel, and I believe there is some tree line, there's some tree line on the rear of this parcel as well, so those, that will be maintained.
And there would be some type of, I imagine, like decent-sized trees put in?
Whatever's existing right back here will be maintained, yep.
But would there be like, maybe some type of evergreen trees lying of them planted so that we're not looking down on?
I'm not sure. I believe that the subdivision is significantly higher than...
I think the existing vegetation is going to remain, I think, is much higher than you could put for our divided that's going to block out.
Existing trees here are going to be much taller than, so we are proposing a row of our divided here, but, you know, those are only going to grow so high. So if this is, you know, if these residential homes are going to be much higher, I mean, I don't know how much, you know, site change.
But there are our divided behind the building.
And would there be any type of barrier, like a fence or...
There's not a fence.
No, but that's pretty steep and rugged and tree back behind there.
This is coming down a pretty good clip.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from the public? So hearing none.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
There's a motion made to close the public hearing and it's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No one opposed, hearing none. That motion passes. The pleasure of the board? One question I have is since the site plan is generic for the retail building, okay, typically we require either a waiver of site plan or a site plan when a new business goes in. And I think that would apply in this case as well. Just as today, we did a waiver for a boutique going into a storefront that's existing. But it's a waiver, which means we could have required a site plan if we felt it was necessary. So depending on what eventually goes in there, and we don't know what it's going to be, whether it's going to be a convenience store or a boutique... Dental office, yeah. Or who knows what. Yep. Okay? That we would be able to review that under either waiver or site plan to make sure that we had the hours down and we had, you know, whatever was necessary to make sure that it in fact is going to behave the way it's been represented to us tonight. I don't think the developer would have any issue with either coming in on a waiver or having you approve it. I mean, they have a track record of building attractive buildings and well-done buildings. As for the hours, I really think that, we'll have to talk about that because I really think the tenant has got the right to set their hours within the bylaws for their type of operation, as long as they comply with those. I don't know if the landlord or the owner has any say over that, saying you can only open B seven, be open seven to three or not. We'd have to look into that. We certainly have imposed or, and or negotiated operating hours on many sites in town. But we'd want to get the tenant involved with that. Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. But as for either a waiver or site design review, I, I don't, we would have no problem with that. Good. Okay. Do I have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for this proposal. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
So a motion been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If they want to oppose, say nay.
Nay.
So the item passes. Thank you very much. Appreciate everybody's help and cooperation and patience. Thank you, Connie.
I propose amendment to the rules and regulations for subdivision of petition and plan of subdivision, section two, general 2.8 amendments. The purpose of this amendment is proposed by the Town of East Long Metal Planning Board and its planning and community development director is to correct typographical errors established in lieu of sidewalk construction fund as an alternative to construction installation of sidewalks by the applicant developer, clarify the obligations of the part of owner ensuring... ensuring the infrastructure installed by the private developer, which includes installation of conduits for fiber optic cable, meet the standards of the utility providers, August 20th, 2019, and September 17th, 2019. See attachment one for phototax proposed changes.
So, yes. So to put this in perspective for the public, so this board has proposed a change to the zoning bylaws, which current, excuse me, subdivision regulations, thank you, which require sidewalks in new subdivisions. This would allow a developer, upon approval of this board, to not put in sidewalks, but to make a payment in lieu of the cost of those sidewalks. And the second thing would be to require a developer to put in fiber optic that would be consistent with municipal broadband purposes?
Just the conduit.
The conduit.
So that the installation of the fiber optic cable could be done at a later date and would not require that the town excavate the sidewalk.
Yep. Okay. So are we, this is a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, so we continued this from the last meeting. If anyone here has any comments about this, would like to address the board? Yes, sir?
My name is Al Royce. Just a comment on the in lieu of sidewalk issue. There's a, it's DPW comes up with their estimates on sidewalk installations, and they're above triple the real cost of what a developer pays to have sidewalks installed. So it's not going to work the way it's set up unless if the in lieu of sidewalks can be proposed for the real cost of what a sidewalk... be proposed for the real cost of what a sidewalk costs.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak about this topic, this issue? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I just can make a comment. This is Mr. Joyce's comment. I personally understand the cost differences between the developer putting it in and DPW putting it in, because DPW, being a municipality, has different requirements, okay, including if they hire a contractor, they have to pay prevailing wage. But the point of this is, we're, it's the developer's right to, what we're putting in here, to not build X length of sidewalks in his subdivision, trading that off for building the same length of sidewalk elsewhere in town. And since that same length of sidewalk is going to be done by DPW, yes, it will cost more. And that's the trade-off that we have. I don't think we should be upset if we're asking for 100 feet of sidewalk, when we're giving up 100 feet of sidewalk. And that's my personal opinion. Having said that, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So a motion to close the public hearing, and it's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On the item?
I make a motion to accept.
Well, then I'm going to interrupt you for a moment. So, so I am uncomfortable with the requirement for the conduit. I don't think we actually ever got a really clear understanding of that, nor the pricing for all of that, nor the technology associated with all of that. So I, for one, would seek to bifurcate that issue.
And address it at a different time.
And address it at a different time. I'm all in favor of the sidewalk points in this, but I wouldn't feel comfortable with the conduit. I don't know how others feel, but.
I could agree with that, because again, we're lumping a whole lot of things into one book, and that may not be the right way to do it, if you're uncomfortable with that. And I personally, again, I'm not sure I see the need for it, and I'm not sure that it makes sense to have a lot of empty conduit in town, when we may be going to 5G and not need conduit anymore. So I'll make a motion to accept, to make the changes to the subdivision rules and regulations, with the exception, but with the exception of the rule regarding conduit.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion made, it's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. So that passes. Okay, item 10?
Case site 2019-09, XL dryer expansion, request by applicant for the withdrawal of approval of case site 2019-02, and approval of case site 2019-09 for site plan review, for the construction of expansion of a 4,475 square foot plus or minus office space with 30 associated parking spaces for XL dryer located at 357 Chestnut Street, assessors parcel ID 18-2A, a 7.29 plus or minus acre site in industrial garden park zoning district. Applicant DNG Enterprises LLC, 357 Chestnut Street, East Long Metal, Mass. 01028.
So would the petitioners like to come forward and address the board? First, I want to thank you for your patience with this item. No problem. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gary Weiner, 53 Mill Road, Hampton, Mass. I am the project site design engineer for the office expansion for XL dryer. With me tonight is John Pelley from Pearson Systems, who will be the general contractor for the construction of the office expansion. If it feels like deja vu, that you're probably going to get the sense of it as we go along here. In March of this year, the board approved the site plan, office expansion for XL. At that point in time, they were looking for 3,850 square feet of office space to be added to the existing building. Along with the expansion was to be a 14 lot addition to their parking to comply with the zoning. Following the approval, there were discussions internally that the building as laid out could be better utilized by squaring it off, if you will. The corners of the building under the original submittal had chamfers on the corners here, which resulted in the loss of about 625 square feet. So the architects went back to the drawing board, and basically what they did was to square the building out. And so with that, we had discussions with the planning director about remediating the site plan to conform to what they would like to do. And in discussion, it was felt that the best way to approach the board would be to ask for a withdrawal of the March 19th approval, and to come forward and request an approval of this updated site plan. With that, I'd like to give to the board a letter from DNG, which speaks to that request for the withdrawal of the 9th, March approval, and to move forward with this new plan, if you will. The plan basically is to add the 625 square feet to the proposed, the original proposed office, totaling then about 4,500 square feet of office space. And that's going to be put along the easternly side, if you will, of the existing building. It's adjacent to an intermittent stream wetland. Under the original filing, we received an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. Subsequently, we went back to the commission and asked them whether or not a new filing would be necessary. They indicated no, that the order of conditions as it stands, as long as we submitted an as-built plan following the construction, would be adequate. And they felt that the erosion control measures that we had proposed would be adequate to protect the wetland resource area. Under the original proposal, as I say, this was the location for the office expansion. We originally proposed 14 parking places along the westerly side, if you will, extending a parking lot that was already there. Under the new proposal, we're asking for 30 total new spaces to accommodate the 625 square feet, plus some possible future expansion. Build the parking lot one time and not have to deal with it coming back again. Drainage is taken care of. Roof drainage will enter the existing retention basin that's there, sized adequately, and has been functional for about nine years, I believe now, with no problem. We're going to construct a new retention basin off the parking lot. All of this pavement just sheds to that retention basin. There is no outlet. It is a self-contained basin, so that there's no discharge to Chestnut Street, or any impact on the wetland resource area. We have asked for a waiver of traffic study, which we did ask for in the original submittal. This is essentially the same, with the 625 square feet will accommodate probably one additional employee. Under our original proposal, we looked at Chestnut Street both from the motoring public standpoint, and also from the access and egress for the people that XL. Site distance is more than adequate, and the roadway itself certainly can handle any additional traffic that XL would be proposing to put onto Chestnut. Driveway entrance, entering and leaving, again, site distance is well beyond, not only the posted speed limit, but well beyond that for safe stopping site distance. That really is what we are asking approval for. It is for the entire 4,000 square feet, but it, from where we were in March, it's about 625 square feet more of office space for XL.
Thank you, thank you. Before I open it to the, before I open the public hearing, does anybody, member of the board, have any specific questions?
Now, I see DPW has approved the stormwater design, which is good, and great to see business expanding.
Yep. So this is a public hearing, so I'd like to open it up to the public. Anyone here who would like to specifically address this item? Feel free to stand. Yes, sir?
I got you, Dan. Ralph Page, 306 Prospect Street. Gary, you've mentioned a retention basin. Is it this one?
We have two. There is an existing one here, Ralph, and then there's a new one proposed at the end of the, the new pavement.
So towards Chestnut Street, then?
Correct.
Being a retention basin, we know from in-town that water does not go into ground very easily. We've had multiple basins in town that have not drained very quickly. So my question would be, one, what is the depth of it? Two, how long is the water going to stay in? Three, are you going to do mosquito control on it? And will it be fenced? Four questions, simple.
Okay, if I can go from the back to the front. No, it's not going to be fenced. Mosquito control is not planned at this time. It's approximately three feet deep. It's a very shallow basin, it has more extremity, if you will, surface area. It's designed for the 100-year, and we did soil evaluations at the, you know, prior to sizing the basin. And we also have history, because this has been designed over about nine years ago, and we have not had a problem with it at all in terms of standing water. I believe under this design, I think we were at about 45 hours before it would fully drain.
Again, like I said, one of my concerns, obviously, with Triple E and our retention basin, is if the water does stay in, there is a possibility of that. So I don't know if it's in the board's purview to be able to do a look back on it after a year and say, wait a minute, the water's not draining out, and this may be a place to look at. Just a thought. Thank you.
Okay. Any other members of the public, of the audience? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So a motion to close the public hearing, it's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none. Take it back to the board.
So have we gotten any comment from the Board of Health in regard to this possible issue of...
No.
We have comments from the Department of Public Works, asking that the applicant, as stated in the stormwater checklist, shall submit an illicit discharge compliance statement prior to the discharge of any stormwater. That comment, and Comcon had no jurisdictional, it was non-jurisdictional, so they had no comments.
I...
And Health Department commented on the skincare proposals.
That was it?
I'd also like to note that this is in fact on the sandy part of town, not on the clay part of town. And that area does drain quite well. It's completely different soils from the eastern part of the town. And so I don't really have any concerns about drainage in that area.
So I think I'd like to kind of bifurcate this first, to vote on the withdrawal of case site 2019-02 first, and then vote on the approval. So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to, what's the proper wording here?
Withdrawal?
To withdraw the approval of site 2019-02.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
A motion that's been made, it's been seconded. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. So that passes.
I make a motion to approve the site plan presented tonight.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So Jonathan, seconded?
Yes.
Okay. So a motion made and seconded to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. So it passes.
Thank you very much.
Very nice job presenting.
It's my swan song.
Oh.
Oh.
Oh, really? Wow. Congratulations.
Are you moving?
No.
Just retiring?
Yeah.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. It's been a pleasure, quite frankly.
Are you a resident?
No, Hampton.
Hampton.
He's retired three times.
I have retired to Brett Favre retire.
Okay. Case 2019-10, R&amp;M gun vault, request by applicant for site plan review for the sale of new and used firearms, ammunition, and accessories at 37 Park Masav, assessors parcel ID 12-33-0, located in a 4,520 plus or minus square foot GLA business zoning district. Applicant is Russo Cardano, 18 John Street, East Long Metal, Mass.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you tonight?
Good, thank you.
So we're back, we did a notification to legal notice in the newspaper, and I believe that was the only thing that we really had hanging over us the last time we were here.
Yep. Well, we wanted to have the site plan and the security, that showed the security...
The security plan I, we had given you last time. I have a copy of it here.
And that has, that has been, chief has approved it.
Correct.
What we wanted to do was we wanted to have on record what that was, and the chief's approval, so that we're consistent in dealing with firearms and shots.
So this is a continuation of a public hearing, so I'll reopen it to...
No, this isn't a public hearing.
Okay.
Sir, I'm sorry. You'll cite that later.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Okay. So it's a public hearing, so I'd like to open it up to the audience, or anyone who's here might want to address this, this item. Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
No.
Okay.
I'm a way brave resident of the town. Honestly, I would like to shop open, so we have competition now. As of this point, you have only one gun shop now. Competition, fair play. Go along with it.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this item on the agenda? Hearing none. Take it back to the board. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So a motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Hearing none. So, the board?
Make a motion to approve the site plan.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So a motion made and seconded to approve the site plan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. It passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Case site 2019-11, ground-mounted solar facility, request by applicant for installation of a four-megawatt ground-mounted solar facility at rear Pease Road, assessors parcel ID 33-1-0, located in a 21.26 plus or minus acre site residential AA, double A zoning district. Applicant is Steve Royer, PLH LLC, 222 South 9th Street, Suite 1600, Minneapolis, Minnesota.
So, before you come up, Mr. Martin, so I would ask the town's attorney to come forward, if you might, Mr. Maynard. So just for the public to know, that we, that this board acted on a similar petition for this location earlier this year. This board took a position on it. It subsequently, I believe, went to in front of the town council. The town council took a position, and I will let you take it from there, to educate the public on why this matter is back in front of the planning board.
Yes, the applicant, PLH LLC, challenged not the action of this board or the town council, but the town's zoning bylaw itself, to the extent that the town purported to preclude construction of ground-based solar facilities in a residential zone. And the land court did conclude in a partial summary judgment decision that that aspect of the town's zoning bylaw was invalid, that the town could not preclude construction of a ground-mounted solar facility in any of its zones, including the residential zone, on the basis of legislative edict from the legislature deeming solar energy to be a protected class of development, if you will, that it could not be so limited, as the town's bylaw purported to limit it. The judge, land court judge included, or suggested, a couple of options, one of which was for the applicant, PLH LLC, to file an application for site plan review... considerations that this planning board gives a project. So that's where we are.
So it was a decision of the court that the town, does the town have any options related to the judge's decision?
The town could or can ultimately appeal that decision once the judgment is finalized in the land court. That has not yet happened and will not happen until this application, presumably until this application runs its course. The land court is keeping the litigation open, I presume, until that process is completed.
So the judge's decision essentially would impact every community in Massachusetts that currently has some type of prohibition of allowing ground-mounted solar arrays in residential zones?
Any such prohibition on those, or even any restriction deemed unreasonable for construction within those ground-mounted zones? That's right. I mean, this is a trial court level decision, it's not binding on other trial court level decisions, but fairly certain that other municipalities will look to it for whatever presidential value they think it has, yes.
So I live in a residential zoning town, so essentially someone could buy the house next door to me, tear it down, and try to put in a solar array next to my house.
Could try to, yes.
Based upon this.
Based upon the state legislation, that's right.
Okay, would you, do other members of the board have questions of town council? I hope that you stay.
I plan on staying. I wouldn't miss Mr. Martin's presentation for the world.
Yeah, it's disappointing that our neighbors Long Meadow could actually, someone could buy a house next to Mr. Martin, tear it down and put in a solar array, or our neighbors in Wilberham who could do the exact same thing. It's, I think the word troubling is, doesn't do it justice, but, but we are, we are here at the judge's urging, and we will certainly listen to the petition, give it its fair weight.
And it does, in fairness, I mean, the town still has its, at its disposal a number of kind of typical zoning considerations that it may use to, in its review of this site plan, setback requirements, buffer zone requirements and the like. But certainly I can understand why you and others would think it troubling.
So my question is, with the exception of side yard, front yard setback, and all those types of normal zoning issues, you basically can put a solar farm wherever you want to put it?
With the exception of those considerations, yes. That according to the land court, any restrictions other than restrictions reasonably calculated to protect health, safety and welfare of the public are stricken, are prohibited. And the court specifically said that the town's lot size limitations were not so reasonably related to that health, safety and welfare. But that with the exception of those lot size limitations, that the other particular restrictions in the zoning bylaws could be applied reasonably.
So it's like a free for all?
I'm not sure if it's a free for all or not, but it certainly changes the landscape. I mean, what the court said is that it wasn't making law, it was simply interpreting what the state legislature has done. And if there's to be some remedy, the implication is, if there's to be some change in the law, it's the state legislature that needs to address that issue.
All right, so houses are all grouped together, industrial buildings are all grouped together, retail stores are all grouped together, but a solar farm can go anywhere?
Just like a church and a daycare center and other protected classes of development, yes. The judge basically said you can't restrict it in it, you cannot ban it in a residential area.
That's right.
And he said that the lot size of two acres was too restrictive.
Correct.
But he did not say that anything about the required buffer zones or setbacks.
That's correct.
Okay, so we do have, since our bylaw does have a, I forget what the word is, but if part of it's invalid, it doesn't make the whole thing invalid.
Correct.
Then the setbacks and buffer zones that we specified for solar, we can apply at this point? Yes, as well as some of the specific provisions with respect to ground-mounted solar, like decommissioning plans.
Right.
And the like.
Yes, got it, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.